Good afternoon. It's a great day in Kershaw County, in this all-American county. We appreciate you all coming in. I've just put my son-in-law on an airplane to Afghanistan and Mr. Snodgrass has welcomed back one of his parishioners. So, life moves on in this great patriotic county. We're now called to order with a full quorum and I ask Councilman Bozard to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Councilman Bozard?
Father, gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings of life. Everything we have, Father, belongs to you. We have nothing on our own. We do nothing on our own without you. As we come at this time to take care of the county business, I just pray that you will guide us and lead us all the way through and that every decision we make will be the best we can come upon. I just thank you for these men that are here. I just ask that you would be with each one of them as they go by their daily lives, trying to help them do all the business for the county. For all we ask in the great and holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I present your reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Bozard. We move now to public comments. Mr. DeBoz, do we have people signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Six people signed up.
Very good.
The first person that signed up is Connie Berryan.
Very good. If you'd come forward, we'll allot about five minutes for each of you and we ask you to keep your comments on the topic and be direct and very, very courteous. I would advise you that this is not a question-and-answer period. It's our time to hear from you. Please, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm coming tonight because I want to see what we can have done to our road. It is Cottage Lane up in Liberty Hill. I've been working with Nick Anderson with Public Works. I think Danny probably knows about this. The road got in terrible, terrible shape and Nick has worked on it, but you can't meet a car on it. I almost got hit head-on on it. It's very curvy. The tax base on this road is over $100,000 because of the rec tax. So, we pay a lot in county taxes. So, we would like something done. We have no trash pickup. We have to go to Liberty Hill to the post office. We have no city sewer, city water. And waterfront was paved, which is the road right beside of us, and our road needs it a whole lot worse than theirs. I even recommended to Nick, if y'all couldn't get the road paved, could y'all tie us into waterfront? Because you can come through the woods and you would avoid the bulk of the road and just pave where most of the houses are. So, I threw that out to him. Could we potentially do that to have something done on the road? I asked Nick to come out on the road. He did come and when it rained on the road, he had to put his truck in four-wheel drive. So, you know, it's not fair to us that we pay all this property tax and we can't even feel safe going down the road. You could not have a fire truck go down there and meet. You couldn't have an ambulance. It's just, it's bad. Something needs to be done. If you don't want to pave it, it at least needs to be widened. We've got gullies on the side of the road that are two feet deep where the road, only one car can go by. You've got huge boulders in the road that literally act as a speed bump. So, I'm coming to y'all asking if y'all would please... Nick said he would be here to help me, but I'm not sure if he's not here. But we would like something done with the road. And Trish Flynn is here with me and she lives on the road as well. So, you know, with the taxes that we pay, we would like something done to the road.
Thank you. I'm going to depart from protocol, ma'am. Nick is in the room right across the way in a transportation meeting and that's where your problem should be addressed. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, he's right across the road there. Right across the hall. Yeah, that's what... No, that's okay. We'll get back to you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. You're close. Thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. DeBoz?
The next person to sign up is Larry Graham.
May is Mental Health Month and Sandy Thompson, who's the director of our local clinic, is here to update us on the one zone.
All right, Sandy?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide y'all a little information about our services and the people that we serve in Kershaw County. We currently have eight adult clinicians that have an average caseload size of 80 to 100 clients. Provide crisis intervention, assessments, individual therapy, and group therapy. We currently have about five or six group therapy groups going on currently. We recently rolled out a new program called Community Crisis Response and Intervention, or CCRi, which allows a clinician to accompany law enforcement to the scene of a psychiatric emergency. We just started that program, I think, last month, so we're working through that. We recently hired a person, an engagement specialist. His job is to assist us in engaging our clients into our services. With him coming on board, he's assisted in reducing our no-show rates by addressing barriers to treatment and engaging people back into our services. We currently have three child and adolescent clinicians and we have two vacancies in that department. They have an average caseload size of 34 to 56 clients. We are currently serving 10 schools with 212 children in those schools. We're working on expanding our school-based services. We currently have five adult prescribers or doctors, or APRNs, one full-time, the rest are part-time. We have two that are onsite and three that provide services through telepsychiatry where they see the clients at a distant location through the television monitor. Currently, we only have one part-time child and adolescent psychiatrist who sees clients both in person and via telepsychiatry. We currently have one full-time nurse and she carries a caseload of 260 medication-management-only clients who do not receive therapy but receive medication only. We have one part-time LPN. We are currently serving 1,147 adults. We have 315 children on our caseloads with a total of 1,462 people of Kershaw County that we serve. We have admitted an average of 66 clients per month over the last six months to our services. In contrast, we have only discharged 52 clients per month over the last six months. That means we're averaging at least 14 additional clients into our services each month. We have a project home that's funded by a grant. It's for transitional housing for our clients who are in, that are homeless or in substandard housing. We currently have four rental units that we ran out and we're serving four clients, one family, three individuals. We have the ability to obtain one more rental unit and we are working, so we're working to expand that program. Our children's services recently received a $5 million grant to start providing non-traditional mental health services to the 16- to 26-year-old population. With that, it's called Roads to Independence, and this will be a separate facility from our current mental health center. We will be locating a facility in the community to provide these non-traditional services to this age group where it would be kind of a drop-in center where they could come and, you know, play pool, do games, but also receive their mental health services there. We are hoping to be up and running by mid to late summer and we're currently looking for a location to house the program. Also located in our building is Sand Hills Medical, so we provide primary care in our facility as well as mental health services. I appreciate all the support that County Council has provided us over the years and we wish to have your continued support.
Great to see you, Sandy and Larry. Thank you very much indeed. Appreciate it.
The next person to sign up is Shannon Team.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Team.
Can you bring the mic over? Yeah.
Sorry. I can use my teacher voice. My name is Shannon Team and I'm a lifelong resident of Kershaw County. I graduated from Camden High School in '94. I then attended Winthrop University and returned to Kershaw County to teach. I'm in my 21st year. I started at North Central back when it was seven through 12 and am currently at Lukeoff Elgin High School. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening and in order to respect your time, I have some other people who also would like to reiterate what we're going to tell you about tonight. And I think we had another one maybe come in or come more come in. If y'all want to stand just so that they can see you, just for a second. There were several more who wanted to come, but it's a really hard time for teachers right now and for parents. So, I'm going to start off with a little story. I promise I'll be quick. But when I was eight, I remember sitting in the dentist's office and looking at a Highlights magazine and there was a story in there about symbiotic relationships. And it talked about a crocodile who would leave his mouth open and the bird would come and clean the crocodile's teeth. So, the bird was able to eat, the crocodile got clean teeth, and they were able to help one another. And I like to think that that is the relationship between Kershaw County School District and Kershaw County. I know economic development is a really high priority of yours, as well it should be, and I really think that stronger local financial support of our schools will increase the number of businesses that are interested in our county. It sends the message that we're working together and that we are going to do our best to develop a workforce that they are going to need. It also shows that we live in a community that provides quality education and for the people who are looking to move here and start businesses here, they want to make sure that their own children will have a quality education. In recent years, Kershaw County School District has implemented STEM offerings to support the county's workforce development emphasis, and they did this without any increased funding, which meant that other areas, areas that are really important to our kids, had to be cut. We know that the state plays the most critical role in this, in funding. However, I know that you all control the local funding and that you also play a really important role. And I'm certain that you understand how important you are to our Kershaw County schools. 10 years ago, the per pupil funding for Kershaw County was among the best in the state and now we're in the bottom third. We're really aware that the state has not taken care of its responsibility in funding our schools. We have definitely been active in addressing that with them and we will continue to do that. But we also know that because the state has not done what they needed to do, Kershaw County schools have lost about $80 million in funding. This has had a really strong impact on the quality education that we can offer our students. And while I'm very hopeful that recent events have encouraged our state legislators to take a more serious and active approach to taking care of our schools, I also know that what they are able to do right now is not going to be enough. And we're hoping that we can work together with y'all to fix some of this. So, I'm very new to this, I'll be real honest. From what I understand, there used to be a local funding formula in place that took care of like expansion and growth, inflation, those types of things, so that the school district could anticipate a steady revenue locally in addition to the state funding. And as with many things during the recession, there were cuts to that and the council decided to stop using that funding. Even though now we have gotten to a point where we have gotten past the recession, there hasn't been anything put in place to take care of that local funding again. Again, from what I understand, the school district has not received an increase from council for the past three budget cycles and I would respectfully ask the council to reconsider reinstating a consistent and predictable local funding for our schools. Kershaw County is growing. I'm in the West Wartory area and we are busting at the seams. We've got almost 1,700 students at Lukeoff Elgin High School. And taking care of this funding would be a huge help to the teachers who are on the front lines and it would benefit our students as we try to prepare them for the workforce and to be contributing members of Kershaw County. It would help lower class sizes, which by research is the number-one thing that we can do to help students, especially those who are struggling, and it would allow us to provide additional resources for our struggling students. I hope that you will thoughtfully consider this request and that you can foresee the huge benefits that this would provide for Kershaw County school districts, but also the benefits that Kershaw County school districts can then provide Kershaw County. In closing, being in the bottom third of the state in education funding really gives the wrong impression of our county. We are an all-American city, an all-American county, and we need to treat our students as such. I know that Kershaw County is a very transparent process for using funds and if you will provide them the funds that they need, the local funding that they need, they will be responsible in using that to best help our students. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for your service and dedication to Kershaw County.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much indeed. Mr. DeBoz?
The next person to sign up is Taishon Grant.
Mr. Grant, thank you.
I begin my remarks tonight by thanking County Council for the opportunity to speak. On the agenda of April 23rd, County Council meeting was a discussion and possible vote on the public comments guidelines. During this discussion, the proposal was made to extend the public comments period by 15 minutes under certain circumstances. I will admit that when I first heard this proposal, I believed it needed a little clarification and refinement before. However, I was looking forward to hearing the constructive criticism of the rest of the County Council members. To my surprise, I was exposed to little participation by half of County Council. Any reasonable proposal to accommodate the needs of attendance at our County Council meetings is reasonable, is worthy of discussion, moreover, an active and lively discussion. Obviously, when controversial topics are included in the agenda, citizens attend County Council meetings to voice either their overwhelming support or disapproval of these issues. And I believe that it should be a priority of council to appropriately accommodate these participants. I thank the few members that actively engaged in this initiative to foster a more inclusive and interactive Council meeting. Nevertheless, the ennui expressed on the faces of many of our County Council members during the discussion conveyed to me that they were not only bored by the discussion but also uninterested in further deliberation regarding the topic. Despite the disappointment I felt during this discussion, I became ever more thankful for those who worked diligently to foster a more transparent and inclusive local government.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeBoz?
The last person to sign up is Jeff Maddox.
Mr. Maddox?
Please, Massa. Massa, please do not rob me anymore. Massa, please let me keep the fruits of my labor on your plantation. Massa, please. Thank you, Massa. Forgive me. Thank you, Council, for meeting, allowing us servants five minutes to beg and plead even as we know that our pleas fall on deaf ears. At least you let us entertain you for a few short minutes. Power corrupts and absolute power, well, absolute power brings out the worst in all men, shall we say. Gentlemen, you hold your, in your hands, a monopoly on force giving you the power to steal in whatever amount or for whatever purpose you deem to be necessary and proper for your fellow slaves on this collective plantation.
Mr. Maddox, we won't use words like steal when we're a government body. Please rephrase that and go ahead. I'd like to hear more.
As a matter of course, I think a majority of people consider firefighting something of a necessary service. Insurance companies give discounts for those homes based on the local fire service by considering such things as proximity to a fire station and previous fire service of that particular fire district. It is a good idea to have insurance and it is also a good idea to have fire protection. But the difference between the former and the latter is a critical for all of us to understand. A person decides for his or herself the type of insurance he needs and wants. He can then choose the amount of coverage he is willing to pay for or that his budget at the time can handle. While fire protection, he has no choice and instead of shopping for the amount of service he might require, he is forced to pay for the service he may or may not need or want. The whole thing works much like an extortion racket where the mafia demands a fee to ensure nothing bad happens. Yep, sure does. Most people today consider a mobile phone a necessity, probably more than fire service. But unlike fire protection, people have a choice of carriers, phones, and plans to fit their needs. In the market of fire protection, there is one choice and one choice only: government. Yep, sure is. In fire protection, there is no competitive pricing because there is a monopoly in the market. Not only is there a monopoly, but is it is a monopoly armed with a gun and able to set prices at will. Sure is. The claim is that only government can provide fire protection and so government must force the people to pay for something only government can provide. Is this not the same claim made by this council with economic development? Without government, there would be no economic development and no fire protection. Right, gentlemen? Sure is. Of course, fire protection is so important, council must not let the people decide if they need more protection. Oh, no. This is far too important to take a chance that the people might say no to being robbed even more than just the $17 million this council has borrowed for our great plantation. Sure is. And so, this council plans on raising all sorts of taxes and fees unilaterally despite the promises made by many of the councilmen to let the people decide in a referendum. I have heard, "We can't wait. It's emergency." But, gentlemen, this is not a new problem at all. You know it. I know it. Yep, sure do. What is clear with this agenda is this council does not trust the people. And so, you will just tax us instead of, no matter how our protests are to the contrary. Why? Because power corrupts and the absolute power that tax and spend has gone through your heads. Yep, sure has. So, now the master has become the servant and the master is now forced to come before our overlords begging the servant to leave him alone. Will any one, any one of you stand up for us or will you all vote against the people because you have the power over us all?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Mr. DeBoz?
That concludes the sign-up list.
And that concludes the public comments. With that, we move to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I need a point of order for clarification, please. I don't enjoy being called a thief. I don't enjoy being, saying I steal. But I think the public has a right to get up here and speak before us and do it somewhat freely as long as they're not attacking individuals personally. Mr. DeBoz, am I too liberal on that?
Well, the chairman is the chairman and per the rules of County Council, he maintains order and decorum, so he would make a judgment call on order and decorum.
Thank you very much. With that, we move to the adoption of the agenda and it's on the board. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Snodgrass. Any discussion about the agenda? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the agenda as published signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and we move to the next item, which is a public hearing. A public hearing regards to an ordinance of an extension to base lease and operating agreement between the county of Kershaw and South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation. A little later in the agenda, you'll see it at tab E. With that, I open the public hearing for public comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one minute, please. Mr. Boz, sitting his back there trying to get your attention. He said he was on that list.
Did we miss it?
Excuse me. He signed up in the public hearing portion.
Oh, okay. Well, let's take a ruling and let's allow Sidney to come up. Sidney, would you come on? And we will continue with public comments. Mr. Smith, please. Butler, I'm sorry. I guess Smith is my hunting partner. Sidney Butler, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There are several things I need to bring to you all's attention. First of all, I want to bring this to you all's attention. Tourists travel our highways and we need to have respect and all for our tourists. Tourists help bring revenue to this county. Now, in one area of this county, some tourists came down and they were looking for a site for their RV camper to camp over here in this county. And they came to me and asked me. I had to send the people to Fairfield County. That's right. This thing of you, you all representing the district, you all need to make these water competent, put water in areas so that our county can grow. That's over near the Chivers Green Room. People wanted to camp out up there, but Fairfield County had a state park up there and they went to Fairfield County. Another thing, there has been criticism about the park on the banks of the Watery River. The thing is, that's a beautiful site. We got people from Lexington, we got people coming from Ritzland and Lancaster County to utilize that river down there now. And when more and more people learn about this place down here, you're going to see the difference by turning that into a park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Thank you. Mr. DeBoz, is that the last one?
Yeah, see, I wrote him in on the public.
Okay, very good. When we return to the agenda then, we finish the public comments, we drop back down to the public hearing. I'll reopen the public hearing in regard to an ordinance of an extension to base lease and operating with the Equine Center. I'm opening it. And no one signed up, Mr. DeBoz?
No one, Mr. Chairman.
And I see no one coming forward. I'm going to close the public hearing and to remind, it's at tab E. We'll come to that a little later on. Now we move now to a series of public presentations. The first is item number one, which is the South Carolina Equine Park. Mr. Jonathan Potter, please.
Chairman, Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here today to give our annual update for the Equine Park as necessary. We do appreciate the extension, obviously, of our lease with you guys. We think that's certainly a beneficial one and I'm sure you all do as well. I included a little bit of literature fresh off the press today. We have an article in a local magazine regarding our 10-year anniversary at the Equine Park. This is a big year for us. There was a lot of work that was put into this in 2009 to secure these funds privately through donations and private fundraising to purchase this from previous owners and ultimately get it moved into the county's possession. So we're thankful for that and we've had a very nice 10 years and great growth and we've seen a lot of positive infrastructure on the property and for that, we're grateful. 2018 was a good year for us. We closed out with a, you know, with a bang except for we did have some tropical storms and some weather events that caused a couple of our big shows to be canceled. But we were able to do, you know, some stuff for other folks on the coastal areas that were impacted by these storms. We had some families that came in from those storms, some people that had total losses and total devastation and they spent their time here in Kershaw County. And we did that through the park basically at free of charge. We just asked for them to make a private donation in the way that they felt was best or, but it wasn't mandatory in any way. We really received a lot of positive feedback from the community. It was very nice to hear and we certainly felt like it was the right thing to do. 2018's numbers were very close to 2017. They would have been up significantly more had we not had some of these major weather events that canceled a couple of our very, you know, bigger shows that we had. But overall, you know, it was in line with others. Our show facility has really done a great job trying to please our clientele and our clientele are the managers who host these shows. We don't put on any events of our own. We made a decision as a board early on that we wouldn't get into the business of trying to put our own shows on, that we would just host these through events. We have about 10 or 12 managers that are regular to our park. And we have a very unique situation in which council and city, South Carolina and PRT funded a covered arena for us some years ago. It was a million dollar facility and that increased our revenue by about 20% year over year and it was a big deal. That second facility also brought up many shows from Clemson and the upstate to Kershaw County. And that had a lot to do with our additional revenue and the horses that were coming into People tend to like our facility because it's very compact and can park close to these barns. We have about 60 RV sites on site and those were put in, most of them, throughout the years from 70s really on. This is a 40-year-old facility just about at this point. And quite a bit of our infrastructure, our barns, about half of them are 40-year-old barns. And typically, when we come here and give annual updates, you know, we come to thank you all, which I'm doing today for all that you have done for us and trusting the South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation, who's the board that runs that, to manage this facility and keep attracting new shows and larger shows. In 2019, this year, we have decided to start on our third phase. We did a master plan originally. We also did an economic development plan that really gave a lot of economic impact, figures and numbers for our community of what we should expect to see revenue generated from our exhibitors that come and visit us. And our third phase really requires some updating of our infrastructure on the county facility, the park that's owned by you all, specifically barns. They're the ones that, they're the infrastructure that means some of them, really means the most to a lot of these guys that are coming here. They have to put their horses in these barns and through 40 years of use, we have three or four barns that desperately need replacing and that's gonna be part of our third phase that we'll see. We also have some bathhouses and restroom facilities that are needed, some larger ones. We completed one in 2018 in a lower portion of our property next to our new covered arena. And we also have a big need for an RV park in our particular facility. There's been a lot of talk of RV stuff recently. There's been a lot of tournaments in town. I've hosted some of those people myself and folks that are coming in through our community RV spots. And the South Carolina Equine Park would love to work with county council on, we bought 13 acres about five or six years ago and for future development for part of our third phase. And we have a unique opportunity to host not only our own folks with the proper facility, but even, you know, folks that are coming in through town midweek or for tournaments on the weekend if this is done correctly. And we have a spot that would be suitable for that. And there's also a need for equestrian use as well where folks travel with their horses. They need a place to lay over when they're traveling 95. They're going from New York all the way to South Florida and there's many folks that need a place to lay over and it creates a unique position for us in Kershaw County to be able to offer something of need. And it's not really a revenue thing for us. We really, you know, we're not so much care about that as we do having a resource that not places above our facilities around us in Aiken and Tryon, but one that gets us in line with them in that regard. So it's something that we'd like to see also happen in our third phase. Our third phase is estimated to cost us somewhere about $2.2 million as for three or four new barns, an RV center that would add about 40 spots as well as some bathhouses and just some minor updates in some different parts of the property to accommodate these new additions. 2019 has started off pretty well. We're a hair off of where we were in 2018 and a lot of that's due to the rainy season that we've had. A lot of people couldn't get their horses prepared and we really, I think we went quite a few Fridays and Saturdays in a row where it rained every weekend and that really, you know, for outdoor events, that does affect you a little bit. But the good news is, is our average revenue per day is up this year over the previous year and over all the years past. And that's a good thing. That's really a tribute to us paying attention to some of the wants and needs that are available and requested and that's raised our annual revenue or our average daily revenue, excuse me. I'd also like to publicly announce today that we have a cafe on site and our exhibitors have outgrown what we've done and our cafe just hasn't been quite where it needs to be. And Candy's at the Granary and Mr., excuse me, Mrs. Candy Van Nort will be opening a second facility out of the Equine Park at the first of June. So one of our very own will be expanding her business out there to help us with that growing need. That's a great thing for us and we're very thankful for that and we've been working with her for quite some time to put this together. So I'd like to open the floor if you guys have any questions, but also to say thank you and, you know, I'd look forward to working with you all in the future about some of these infrastructure enhancements and how we can work together with funding through you all or city and SCPRT and private donation and fundraising.
Thank you very much. Any questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please go ahead.
Mr. Potter, my question, when is your, are we coming into your peak season as long as the weather cooperates?
Our spring tends to be very heavy. We taper off a little bit sort of mid-June, really July and August are kind of, we have some, you know, a little bit, we have some clinics and some things when the heat comes. The fall is very, very busy. We've actually restructured a lot in what we've done since we opened the second covered arena in that we used to have a ton of hunter jumper shows and we've really seen a lot more of quarter horse and paint horse. And we're getting some really big numbers from them. And one thing, most of these shows have moved from the upstate to come here. They've had a couple of shows here and now they've moved almost all here. The limiting factor of really our shows not being bigger is we don't have the capacity in barns or the barns, some of the older barns are really too small and they're just not accommodating. It's one really big problem really with the quarters and the paint horses. But we have some nice events possibly coming for 2020. There's quite a bit of interest in our park just because we are unique in the facilities that we offer, these covered arenas and that sort of thing. And not to mention that, we just really pay attention to the folks and our park manager has a lot to do with that. He's been with us for quite some time, staying with us from my math, is very grateful for them and he really does a nice job for us.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Snoggrass?
John, thanks for coming in and thanks for the work you guys do. And I commented before that there's been many times I'm in a restaurant, surprise, surprise, I'm in a restaurant in town on the weekend and the restaurant's full of equine folks who you can tell are in town because perhaps they're at your facility. So, you know, thanks for that. So how many shows do you do that are, what's your English versus Western radio or Western show? I mean, is it one bigger than the other?
They're just, it's really two just two different, totally different groups of people. Really, I mean, we had probably, I would say eight to 10 in our inception and now, you know, we're probably six-ish or something like that. They're not quite as big and a lot of that is due to Aiken and Tryon. Aiken, the Aiken Steeplechase Track, some private money was left through someone's death and they spent about $10 million, I believe, on this facility. It's very, I've just spent two weeks there. I just left there on Monday and it's obviously completely new, new barns, new everything. You know, I wouldn't be surprised in the next year or two if they don't have a month straight of hunter jumper shows at the facility. Tryon, as we all know, is a big massive facility. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent up there. So whenever we're talking about horse show facilities and that sort of things, we're talking about, you know, tens of millions, hundreds of millions. It's very different than what we do here and we know that that's not achievable and nor do we know that, you know, we know funding's not available for something like that and so we don't seek that. But we'd like to carry on what we have and we have a niche market, we feel like, outside of us competing with Garrison Arenas specifically in the upstate. We even have a show maybe out of North Carolina that comes to South Carolina and North Carolina allows that just because of our central location in South Carolina to I-95, 2677. It really is a central place for everybody in the state to travel to. So we have a really unique position here to do that. But in changing in the hunter jumper shows to these quarter horse and paint horse and some of these more Western shows, many of them do travel with live-ins. They travel with bigger trailers that they carry their horses in. They also live in these trailers and the park is very compact when that happens. We have a lot of congestion internally and we maintain our fire lanes as required and that sort of thing. But it becomes difficult and we've done some temporary stuff to accommodate them. But these, you know, there's folks that come and stay in our hotels and we're a very good partner of Mr. Bill Patel. There's reasons the new Hampton Inn's were opened up. We're not the only, you know, the only club that has something to do with that. Motorsports Park and others have a lot to, that bring a lot of folks to town and we're certainly not looking to detract anything from anybody staying in hotels. We're just looking to accommodate the ones that are not.
Mr. Gardner?
Certainly what y'all do is a great return on our investment because y'all do put a lot of people here and a lot of those people spend money here. But your Phase Three, you said it was about a $2.2 million investment. Do you have a breakdown on, I think you said three phases, the barns, restrooms, and the RV park? Do you have a breakdown on each one of those costs?
Right. So we have a, we got a preliminary bid. Obviously, you know, we're looking to do this over five to eight years and kind of do this in, you know, Phase Three, A, B, C as necessary. Barns are about 200K apiece. Three of them can be had for about 550,000. They give you a little discount if you do three for this first bid. We didn't seek additional bids, but we know that that's in the ballpark of what they cost. Big barns at other facilities, I mean, it's kind of a common knowledge just sort of what they roughly cost. And those would be similar to the newer style barns that we have on our property. I say newer style, those are probably about 20 years old at the moment, but they're in great shape. We have very little stall maintenance in those 20-year-old barns and they're kept up with, and they're in great shape. So bathhouses and that sort of thing, they run about 150K, 150,000 would take care of a bath house. We have some renovations of our show office that needs to be enlarged and we would remove some current bathrooms that are in need of renovation. And the last remaining amount really would be some underground drainage and piping and infrastructure and for this RV location that would kind of free us in the park internally of these RVs that come in and these horse trailers with live-ins. They would get them out into a separate place with separate entrances. We wouldn't be hacked so tight in there and, you know, we could worry a little bit less about, you know, any kind of emergency services that would be necessary, fires or anything else. Because, you know, all that stuff is always a worry in a horse facility. You never want to have something like that. Thank God we've steered clear of that. But as we grow and we get more of these types of shows that require that, we're looking to get them in a separate location and get them, you know, with proper hookups similar to what they would have in these other facilities around the state and neighboring states.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Conell.
Thanks for updating us, Jonathan. A quick question for you on utilization. So as I look at the 2018 handout you gave us, it shows 69 show days. So anybody just looking at this off the street would see there's about 290-plus days that aren't show days. And I think it'd be useful for the public to know what goes into a show day. How long does it take you to prep beforehand and how long does it take you to recover?
Right. Every show's a little bit different depending on some of the needs and necessities of these shows. But typically, we see a lot of management that will come in days ahead of time to prep these rings, to prep the show facility. For us, after a show, we kind of have a one to two-day cleanup period. We have quite a bit of staff and we have some extras that come in to clean stalls and that sort of thing. But, you know, you have trash to be removed and that sort of thing. So for us, we kind of have a two-day turnaround window where we're full on cleaning up and getting ready for the next group. But again, management comes in of the people that are leasing these facilities. They come in a couple of days ahead of their show, you know, to get rings. We prepare rings in our footing internally, but they have, they bring jumps and they bring their own equipment depending on what they need and so they're usually getting here early. We also have folks, these show days are days that they actually show. These exhibitors typically come in a day or two ahead of that. They school their horses on those days. They kind of practice, they have a place. And many of them leave a facility and just go to the next facility. So instead of going home for a day or two when they live in Texas or somewhere else, they have to find a place to lay over and they can't lay over in a hotel with their horse in a trailer. So they typically go to the next spot, especially when it's a circuit-based thing and folks are from out of town. You know, they're coming ahead of time. So that 69 show days is a little, it doesn't quite tell the whole picture in that aspect because there are folks there, they're just, we call them show days and they're days when we're actually collecting fees from show management for those particular, you know, days where they're actually showing.
Thank you. Other comments? I would say, any member of your board here today?
There are none.
Okay. But thank you for coming. I want you to convey back to the board our appreciation for what you do. The equine industry is vital to this county in many, many ways. It's tourism, as Mr. Butler talked about, and the Chamber of Commerce is all over it and our director's here tonight. So I appreciate that. There was a rodeo last weekend, there was the Equine Center was going hot and heavy. And of course, we have the Carolina Cup and that's only a small part of the horse brand for Kershaw County. But thank you for maintaining that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Well done. Well done. The next item on the public presentation is ATAX Committee Recommendations by the distinguished Mr. Chip Galloway, sir. And I believe that your presentation is at Tab B and if you can put it on the screen, that'd be helpful.
And I'm not near as tall as Jonathan, I'll adjust. And the Chamber of Commerce is behind him and the ATAX committee's behind you also. Thank you for your application. I want to start out by thanking the committee that I have. We have Beth Ford, Catherine Brown, Amy Keiner, Brant Tomlinson, and always and never forgotten wonderful Mary Siegler who just takes great care of us. I don't know what this county would be like if Mary Siegler wasn't in it each and every day. I'm thankful to the Lord for her. We had 140,434 dollars worth of grant requests this year. We had 70,951 dollars and 29 cents that was given to us and we utilized all of it. Great discussions and it's in your packet how we decided to, to recommend it to you. Take it very seriously. We send out the grant applications to each of the board a week or so in advance so they can look over them, so they can grade them and then we, we have lively discussions. And do y'all have any questions about what's before you?
Well, I'm afraid I can't get it up on the board electronically, but each of you have a copy. Questions, gentlemen? Uh, Mr. Tucker, there you go.
I have a comment. You need to thank Ms. Keiner that she wasn't part of your figuring this year because that really helped you get these numbers to work.
We always do what we can do. You're right.
Comment? Uh, yeah, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Galloway, I don't know how much we're paying you to do this, but it's not enough. You do a great job and I appreciate what you've done over the years. You've always been very thorough. And one comment that you made that I absolutely have no issues with and agree with is Mary Siegler.
She is wonderful, isn't she?
And thank you for recognizing her on that because she does quite a bit for all of us.
I wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't for Mary Siegler.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because this will be part of the budget, this information will be in the budget packet, so it will be available as well for each budget, so that's, just to let you know.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Snodgrass.
Hey, Mr. Galloway, thanks for coming, appreciate your work. I think, I think a lot of folks on the desk know this answers the question, but maybe the folks who are here, maybe the first time they've heard something about ATAX. Would you, would you explain to us what a criteria is for someone to apply for ATAX funding, what they have to provide?
See, normally I would yield that to Mary because Mary's the one that takes care of us whenever it gets something tough, but we get accommodation tax that comes in and there's a pool of money that, that is available. And each year we have, I think it's in what, three-year cycle, that we end up, this is a low year, we may have more in some years, but it's directly related to hotel stays. That's where the money comes from and we get a percentage of that and there's a grant application process that goes, goes through our commission, our committee and Mary does a great job of getting out the information that they need to be able to apply for it and they apply for it and there's a criteria for each and every grant application that we get that they have to pass to make sure they're available for our recommendations. And then once we do that, we try to be good stewards of the money that comes in and figures, figure out what we can do to create more hotel stays and what we can do to, to create folks coming here. And, you know, we just heard a great presentation from the South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation and they apply for a grant with us and they make a difference and Jonathan and them do a great job of it. And we take all that into consideration and how the grant's written and how that returns into a revenue stream for us in the future.
Thank you.
Other comments? I would say Mr. Galloway is also a member of our C-100 and I don't know what else you don't do, Mr. Galloway, but it's a testament to how important volunteers are to our county. Thank you very much indeed. There's one other thing is I noticed you had requests that were twice as much as the money was available and that's a small statement of what we do during our own budget cycle.
That's exactly right. It makes a great debate, doesn't it?
Yeah. There's always less money than we need. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that item, that concludes our public presentations. We move now to approval of minutes. Are you going to be able to get those up? There they are, good. The minutes are located at Tab B. Can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Uh, Mr. Conell, a second from Mr. Snodgrass. Gotcha. And Mr. Gardner will excuse himself from this. Can we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous with Mr. Gardner recusing. The minutes are approved. We move now to a proclamation recognizing May 10th through the 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week. It's at Tab C and it's also on the screen. I'll read it briefly with our EMS here, Gerald. Your team seems to be gathered with that. I'll read briefly from it and then we'll take a motion to approve. Kershaw County Proclamation, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, the members of our EMS are ready to move providing life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators and others, approximately two-thirds of all emergency medical service providers are volunteers. The members of the EMS teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals and Kershaw County is truly blessed. Whereas this year's theme is caring for the community coincides with Kershaw County's EMS mission statement of unsurpassed care provided by skilled, compassionate professionals dedicated to team, community and life. Now therefore be it resolved that Kershaw County Council does hereby proclaim the week of 19 through 25 May 2019 as Kershaw County Emergency Medical Services Week and encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. May we have a motion to approve?
So will Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, discussion. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to all of you and wish you many, many more years here in Kershaw County, don't run off to other counties. We're doing, we're doing the best we can by you and we will continue to do that. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Gerald, and the team.
Other comments? Uh, Mr. Bozard.
Yes, I want to echo that and that proclamation, saying there enough.
Amen.
And we want to thank every one of you because I know what you're going through out there every day. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Other discussion? I was at a meeting last night and a lady came up to me and gave me a long story about how professional the team is. I mean, we see it everywhere, don't we? Every one of these gentlemen here hears about it. And, and we also, during the proclamation, you saw a little bit about the volunteers, the fire, the 911, but tonight it's your night, Gerald, and with that, let's move to a vote. All those in favors?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
Quick comment, please. Thank you. I'm out in the county quite a bit and Gerald, I have, I don't get any complaints on your agency. I mean, I hear nothing but compliments and I tell you, I'm proud of what this county council has done to support EMS. I'm proud of what you've done to build EMS because, listen, if we didn't have you and your staff, we wouldn't be where we are right now with EMS and Emergency Service and that's with all our services out here. But thank you so much for all you've done and we're going to continue to support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments? With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor so signify. And it's unanimous, Mary, and the motion and the proclamation passes. If you want to come forward, bring the whole team and let's get a picture.
Mind you, Eric, bring them forward.
Not beside you, sir. I don't want you to stand. Stoop down.
Line them up, line them up, line them up.
Now we'll move to a series of ordinances. We've got about eight of these to go through, but each one is of vital importance and do our attention. The first item is the third reading of ordinance of the County Council of Kershaw County to amend, amend our official zoning act and it's at Tab D and the map is shown on the, on the screen. Mr. Carpenter, can you tell us what we have here?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have tonight for third reading an ordinance, ordinance to rezone a portion of the county. This is land located in the Westville area. It's across the street from Carolina Motorsports Park. It has previously been approved by council twice with unanimous votes.
So we'll move forward on a third reading. Can we have a motion to approve on third reading?
Yes, sir, I make that motion. We approve on the third reading.
That's your district, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. We moved now to a discussion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bozard?
Yes, thank you, sir. This motion is for 144 RV parks up on 521, across from a racetrack, 30 cabins, a filling station, a car wash, a ladies' center, a women's wellness center, they call it, and I'm looking forward to having it up in my district. Thank you very much.
Very good. Any other comments? Seeing there are none, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor so signify. And it's unanimous on the third reading and it passes. Mary, move to item number two, which is third reading of an ordinance to approve and authorize an extension to the base lease for the South Carolina Equine Center, which we just heard. It's at Tab E. If you want to look at the details, Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have in front of you tonight for third reading, ordinance to extend the base lease for the Carolina Equine Park. This is for a five-year extension with the option for another five-year extension on top of that.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, do we approve the third reading, a second reading, I'm sorry. Third reading.
Third reading.
For the Equine Park.
Very good. Mr. Tucker, a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass. Very good. Can we have any discussion on that? Seeing there is none, we can move to a vote. All those in favor on the third reading of an ordinance to approve the Equine Center lease so signify and it's unanimous. And we move now to item number three, which is the second reading of an ordinance on another zoning map designation. It's at Tab F and the map is shown on the board. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce that one?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have tonight in front of you for second reading an ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land, approximately 21 acres of land from a current zoning of R-15 to RD-1. This has previously been approved by council on first reading.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve on second reading? So move, Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Conell, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor so signify and it passes unanimously, Mary, on the second reading. We move now to a series of four first readings regarding the budget for the coming years. Item number four is the first of those and I'll begin to introduce it, is in first reading entitled only of an ordinance to provide budget appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce that, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as is the case with this county, when budgets are presented, we as a rule present the first budget entitled only. Tonight you have presented the 2019-2020 budget in front of you entitled only.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve entitled only?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2019-2020 budget entitled only.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard. Mr. Tucker, you want to lead?
I would just like to say I thank my colleagues and mostly staff for having a balanced budget with a lot of good in it and that we had some healthy debate and discussion over this budget and I look forward to the next two readings and any amendments that may be presented.
Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bozard, you a second? I'll get to you, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Mr. Carpenter, all his staff, and I don't know if I'm getting used to doing the budgets now or getting easier. I'd like to think they're getting easier in presenting them to us.
Oh, they're not.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Jones, please go ahead.
Well, I must be on a different county council than him. It hasn't gotten easier for me. Listen, but thank, thank you members of council, I've enjoyed the debate we've had and the discussion and dialogue. Mr. Carpenter, this, what we're voting on tonight title, title only is a balanced budget, no tax fee.
Correct. Yes, sir. The draft budget is presented is a balanced budget and it has no increase in taxes or fees.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? Well, I would just tell you, it was, I don't guess Sandra's still here, but there were long nights and this was a very, very comprehensive budget and some tough issues were wrestled. There will be undoubtedly amendments as those of you who may be new to the process and second, third readings will certainly have more to say later on about that. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
As we'll discuss in other portions of it, the operational budget draft is presented to the council is balanced with no fees or taxes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the end of your statement.
With no fat, with no tax or fee increases.
Exactly. All right, well, let's now move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and it passes unanimously on the first reading entitled only. We move now to item number five and the proposal here, just as a matter of how we'll run this, is I'll take a first and second and then we'll have Mr. Carpenter do a presentation and I think there should be some lively discussion for those who've been bored with our discussion to this point. We will certainly fulfill any needs for a discussion among this body here in a moment. So with that, as proposed, we'll do a first reading entitled only and then follow it immediately with a detailed discussion. The title of this regards an effect for service and user fees for rates and charges for fire protection. Mr. Carpenter, can you tell us what it is and then I'll ask for you to brief after we get a second on the motion, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the mechanism by which the county would begin the implementation of a countywide professional fire service.
Very good. With that, can we have a motion to approve?
So may.
Uh, Mr. Conell, thank you, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. And with that, Mr. Carpenter, if you would lead off with your presentation?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Well over a year ago, this council and the community started a discussion about the future of fire service in Kershaw County. It began with individual council members and citizens speaking about it for quite some time really before. Then a group of, a series of ad hoc meetings were held across the county with, that included a volunteer fireman, county staff, interested citizens that pulled together and discussed what their desires were, what their, their needs were. Information and data was shared with them. This resulted in some changes that were made in, in the short term, changes that were able to be affected by current budgets and funding, the implementation and purchasing of new software that allowed the county to be track, able to track efficiently and effectively the kind of data that we needed in order to present to council recommendations based on facts and based on facts that council was interested in hearing. We then entered into in the fall, there was a presentation from staff to council showing recommendations as a result of all that study. The recommendations were that the county begin moving towards a professional fire service, meaning that there would be full-time coverage, ultimately of 24 hours a day, seven days a week, serving the entire county. That the. That the issues of how this would be implemented were to be discussed when we entered the budget season. We began budget workshops about two months ago. Fire was discussed during some of those workshops that gave to the county several options to consider on how such a program could be implemented that addressed legal issues as well as funding issues. Tonight, we'll begin the process of council debating publicly those funding issues. And with that, I will start with explaining to council again, as you see in front of you. It all began with a vision, Vision 2030, the vision plan that this public approached, this public debated on, and the public approved through a variety of sources, called for changes to our fire services.
At that point, let me halt. I think, Mr. Carpenter, you'd be all right if council interrupted you during the briefing.
Absolutely.
So I invite comments as you move forward, but recognizing that the other people in the room have not seen this briefing, so if we can move it along. So I would welcome you as council members to follow protocol and ask to speak. I would also make sure it's known that Mr. Connel and Mr. Jones and Mr. Gardner did a great job in leading us through this, and I need to recognize their effort along with the fire service and Gene. So with that, I just want you all to know that this is wide open discussion with the usual protocols. Okay? Go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, from there, we moved into the council itself. The council began setting a goal back in the 2017-2018 year, 2018-1819, and then the current year, 2019-2020, vision and goals for this council. In each case, the council set fire service either through the creation of an ad hoc committee, executing the recommendations, or implementing those recommendations. Moving on, some of the data that we use to base this recommendation on, you start with the heat map. Those are fire calls throughout the county. Obviously, the redder they are, the more intense, the more concentrated they are, is no surprise. They do tend to focus around the populated areas. US-1 being the backbone of the county is where the bulk of the heat lies. Areas scattered throughout the county would, could also and would also normally be grass fires, tree fires, things like that. But in addition to fire calls, first response, first response has become far more common for our firemen as well as our EMS, our public safety in general. And first responder can be accidents. It can be emergency calls at houses. And you see the heat map for first responders is, again, it's more concentrated in the urban areas as they respond more and more to those calls. When you mix the two together, our first response and fire, again, you get a better understanding of where the calls themselves lie with the bulk of them being in the areas around Elgin and then up also in the Bethune areas, Cassett. Now, notice that Camden and Lugoff are not represented because they have their own fire service districts. If we were to include them, then there would be big red splotches in the center of the map. But they have their own fire districts, and we have only reviewed data from calls that have been responded to by county fire services. So understand that this is a map that only shows unincorporated areas in the county that are not covered by either Lugoff Fire or the City of Camden. Taking this data and moving forward with the recommendations, these were the recommendations that were presented to the council. The first one, recommendation was volunteer recruitment and retention efforts. Those have been affected. The second was to continue improving the recruitment and retention. That has also been affected. The next inclusion, where we're going next, is the creation of full-time firefighters through two phases. The first phase would be hiring 12-hour shifts, daylight shifts, essentially when people are working, volunteers are not available as easily to respond to a fire, moving to a second phase of 24/7 coverage. This would be implemented throughout the county, starting full-time daylight coverage on the east and the west side, and then moving to 24/7 from there. Moving on, the implementation schedule. This is a plan that takes years to accomplish. It's a five-year plan. Partial reasons being that we have to build buildings, we have to acquire equipment, and we have to recruit and train our leadership as well as our employees as well. So you see, beginning in 2019, we would start with a total of 10 firefighters covering the county. These would be daylight hours, so we would have smaller shifts that would be available. They would be strongly supported still by our volunteers. You would see the two main stations, Blaney and Cassett, would be the centers of those two stations and the centers of our firefighting efforts. That's what we call the hub. Each hub would have spokes. The spokes would radiate out from the hub, and they would be leading to volunteer fire departments. The volunteer fire departments will continue to exist, and the volunteer fire departments are crucial to any plan we have going forward. Volunteer fire departments and stations were included in all these discussions and were part of them. So they have been part of the beginning to where we are as well. As you see, moving forward, we begin moving slowly into 24-hour coverage. Then we have to build buildings. We have to complete EMS stations before we end up finally by 2025, the full shifts in both Cassett and Blaney. At that point, we would be done with this phase of it. Any future phases, we have not considered. We're just trying to get us to the kind of coverage necessary and needed on both sides of the river. Moving forward, there's only three ways to pay for it. One is through a fee. One is through a millage. And one is through a referendum to the people themselves on a millage. Pros and cons listed. Then finally, how would that compare? And so we compared the imposition of fees or millages to the existing fire professional services in this county. And you see, starting with Lugoff Fire, their current operation is operated off 31.4 mils and a $23 fee. Trying to come up with apples to apples. Typical house would cost $127 a year in the Lugoff Fire District. The City of Camden charges a fee based on the value of their house. Therefore, $100,000, which is the typical home we're using, will cost $190, costs $190 a year in the City of Camden. In the county, the ultimate millage would be 23.7. We currently have 9.8 mils on the books. So it'd be approximately 14 mil increase. The impact on a typical home, the same house, would be $92 in Kershaw County. If we added a fee and not a millage, $25 fee per parcel. So a parcel is a tax unit, tax map unit. It is either a house, or it is a field, any piece of land that has its own tax map number. So $25 per parcel and $25 per car. Using an estimate of three cars per house, it'd be averaging $100 per house. Mr. Chairman, the recommendation to council from staff is this first year, the imposition of fees to begin the program and start the process forward so we can begin building buildings and hiring employees, while the council would and the county and the staff would work out the details for the upcoming year with the various municipalities in order to affect a millage starting in 2020, calendar year budget year, 2020-21. That's my report, sir.
Excellent briefing, and thanks to everyone who participated. Gene and your team, Mr. Connel, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Gardner. As a, just a housekeeping here, a little later on in item number six on the agenda, we'll talk millage for a future date. But for now, let's focus on item number five. And what are your points, gentlemen? Anybody? Mr. Connel, do you want to lead off?
Sure, I made the motion. I'd first like to thank Keith, Gene, and Scott for all your help in educating us over the last, really, I guess it's been two years, but we did have the fire study and ad hoc committees a year plus ago, looking at fire service. This is a national issue that is now coming to Kershaw County in that you have an aging but valiant group of volunteers and a very tough challenge in recruiting new volunteers. We've basically had our fire service subsidized by volunteer altruism for decades and decades and decades as long as fire service has been around. It used to be the Bucket Brigade, and it increased from there as people could drive and get around. The problem is, the requirements for certification come at about 220 hours or so for a new person. So if you take someone young with a family that wants to become a volunteer firefighter, if they take four hours out of every Saturday for an entire year, they will just about qualify to go and stand as an actual fireman at a lower class and not even be able to do too much, as I understand it. It's very hard to make that sacrifice away from family, work, and otherwise to increase the volunteer force. We haven't been taking good enough care of our volunteers, in my view. We need to fund retention better, reimbursements. We need a better point system. We need to recruit better. And these are people that we expect to go into burning buildings and save our family members, or interact with burning cars that can explode and save our family members. We've got to do better. And we also have to acknowledge that Kershaw County is experiencing tremendous growth, unlike we've ever seen before. And that comes with some costs required to fund these life safety issues. So I look forward, as Mr. Tucker said, to the future readings and seeing what develops. I look forward to the debate. I know that we've got to do something. I think that we probably need to do it this year. If the millage had been addressed over the last two decades, we wouldn't really be where we are right now, and we could probably have a professional fire service. But we are where we are, and we now have systems in place and data in place that gives us really informed decisions on what we're doing next. Just for context, as we move into the next part of the discussion, whoever wants to chime in next. Lugoff Fire's budget's about 1.3 million annually, and they service about 4,800 parcels, in rough numbers. Camden Fire has about a $2 million budget, and they service about 8,700 parcels. Kershaw County has about a $1.3 million budget, and we service about 25,900 parcels. So we have done a lot with a little bit for a very long time. And it's my view that now it's time to do something on fire service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good comments. Mr. Gardner, you had a second?
Yes, I did. As you see on the chart there, for either way that we do it for the county, the cost is approximately the same, $92 if we raise the millage, and approximately $100 based on a fee. It's probably going to be a combination of both. We don't have any millage on the books now. The fee would be an immediate cash flow for us that we could start this program. We could change it over to a millage and possibly even a referendum down the road. The referendum doesn't answer our problem right now. So I think probably either the fee or the millage would be the way to go now, and probably the fee would be the quickest way to do it. So, but our cost, when you compare it to both Lugoff and Camden, our costs are considerably lower than what they are charging the people. So I think you need to make sure that you look at that. So that concludes my...
Mr. Snodgrass?
A question that I know the answer to, but I want to ask it just so the public can understand. So, Mr. Carpenter, what happens to residents in unincorporated areas of the county which may be under fire service through another entity? Say, East Camden, which pays fire service through their water bill? What happens to them under this plan of a fee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Snodgrass. Currently, all those people who are covered by the City of Camden's Fire District that don't live in the city limits of Camden, they are in a separate tax district as far as the county is concerned. So we know every single person who is in that area. Those people, because we have already identified them and following the system of going with the fees the initial year, they would not be affected at all. So if a fee is implemented, they would not be affected by it. Moving forward into the following year, when we move to a millage, part of the process of working out the details of getting that ordinance and that millage implemented would require us to work with the City of Camden as well as Lugoff and Elgin to just work out the details so that, again, they're not affected. So nobody would be affected by the fee, and nobody would be affected by the millage. If council approves that going forward, we'll have that year to make sure that that's the case.
So folks who might live in Arrowood or live in Fairfax, they'll continue to pay their $15 a month fee through their water bill for keeping the fire service under this plan?
Right. They'll continue paying it. They'll continue to be served by the Camden Fire. When the county service is up and running, should it pass, they will continue to be served by the City of Camden and not the county, even though they're unincorporated.
Thank you.
Other comments? All right. Thought that was very thorough. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're having a stare-down, Mr. Tucker and I. Who's going to dare go next? Because I know you've got some comments.
I recognize Mr. Jones.
Look, I think our firemen do a great job. And I haven't served on any ad hoc committees except two, the fire services, one, because I have enough to do serving county council full-time in the county. But you know, when we started this thing and we started talking about getting together with our ad hoc committee, we were talking about a referendum, pulling this information together and putting it out there to the people, saying, okay, this is what we found out we have, and this is what we need. Let the people be involved. And somewhere, and somewhere down the line, we've missed that. Mr. Carpenter, I want to thank you for bringing up the referendum tonight because it's not mentioned here on the agenda at any place that I can find. When we had our work session, I thought we had a very good work session, Mr. Chairman. We talked about the millage. We talked about the fee. We talked about the referendum. And we talked about putting things on the agenda as far as first reading by title only. Then I get the agenda, and there's nothing on there about the referendum. The referendum was a huge part of our discussion on the ad hoc committee. And it, and one thing that I did, I made a promise. That's what I was going to support. And I am somewhat disappointed that it's not here. And when we talk about a fee, it'd be, like you said, it'd be a fee on each vehicle, it'd be a fee on any properties you own, a separate fee. It'd be a fee on the house. If you have, like, if you have a house, it'd be a fee, correct?
Yes, sir, on the house, but not the house and the parcel. So it would be on the parcel.
What if you have a second piece of property, Snod?
It'd be on that fee.
I'm sorry, and I wasn't clear, but that's what I meant. So that's going to be $25 on all the above. I just am uncomfortable with this based on the fact that I have, throughout this entire time, thought and felt we were going to do a referendum. But it's just not being mentioned or talked about. There seems to be no appetite for it. And you know, we talk about Lugoff Fire. Lugoff Fire started, I think, with a referendum. And we talk about things need to be done now. I don't think a single member of this county council has voted to give the Fire District any millage in the last four or five years, even though we could have because of extra millage through Act 388. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we say it has to be done tonight. It has to be done now. I think a referendum would cost us about $50,000. Am I correct, Mr. Carpenter?
That's the estimate that was given to us, yes, sir.
Okay. But the way I look at it is if we, I know there's some that probably don't feel we need to spend $50,000 for a referendum, but I can assure you, we have spent a lot of money on things that, to me, that are less important than a referendum here in the voice of the people. And the thing about it is, if we don't spend the $50,000, folks, we're going to spend 1.7 million. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker, did you indicate? Go ahead.
I had one thing.
Yeah, Mr. Gardner, go ahead.
You won't get both. You won't get a fee and a millage. And if the millage goes up, the fee will go away, as I understand it. Correct, I, you won't be double-dill.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say, I'll thank the three council members, Councilman Jones, Conell, and Gardner for sitting on this committee, and the chairman for appointing them. And I thought you brought back a lot of good information. But I do want to make it clear that it's not too late for a referendum if someone chooses to want to do one. The problem hails is that we, and correct me, Mr. DeBose, if I misunderstood you earlier, as council members and county employees, we can't participate in doing the petition and the educating of the public or the voters. It's like the school district when they did their referendum. So with that being said, the county has no participation. And I'm not even clear if the volunteer firefighters can participate or not, because we haven't heard the final answer on that. So who is the group? Who are the people? Who is the organization that's going to run with this? Because we can't. That's number one. The $50,000 that Mr. Jones is talking about, that's for the election. We can't spend a dime on educating the public and advertising for this, not the county. Can't be county money. So there is some restrictions, and that's why the appetite is not an appetite, because there's things that we can and we cannot do. And you're going to have to find someone in the community that's willing to take, old saying, the bull by the horns and run with this. So that's part of it. And as Councilman Gardner said, you won't get both. And also be aware that none of this right now is in your budget, as it's been read tonight. These are all first reading entitles only on possible things, choices that we may have. So we would invite your input, we would invite your phone calls and your discussion, to make sure that we're doing the right thing and moving where it's going to best benefit most people. I'm not happy about the fee, but I'm on the pay. I've got four parcels in my name, so that's four parcels and five cars. It's going to hit me pretty good, but it's worth what we're trying to do. And you know, when it goes to the millage, it's going to get me again, but it is what it is. I know how important fire service is, and I thank God that I've never had anything on fire while I've needed you guys. And I feel privileged of that. So with that being said, I'm looking forward, once again, to the discussion and any amendments that these men up here want to bring, they can bring and make, and we can move forward. We got public hearing and two more readings.
And just to recall, we're still in title only. Mr. Carpenter, do we do a referendum for EMS for $3 million a year?
No, sir.
We did not. So there's a guidepost. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Snodgrass, yes, sir.
If Mr. Jermaine, can I ask a question to the county attorney concerning the referendum?
Sure, right, absolutely.
So, Mr. DeBose, let's say, as Mr. Tucker has explained, a referendum requires a citizen group that's unemployed at the county to kind of take this mantle. And I get it, a referendum is, it's interesting, you know, to allow the citizens to be able to speak into that. So let's say someone tonight jumped up and said, man, this is, yeah, just like we did the education referendum, I'm going to do this. So give me a timeline. So our next election is next year. Give me a timeline, in your professional opinion, of, do we have time, if we started right now, to get on that 2020 ballot? And what that process would look like?
I think you could get on the 2020 ballot, because that's over a year away. But some group would have to get out, Mr. Tucker's correct, and so are you, Mr. Snodgrass, and I think Mr. Jones even alluded to it, a private group would have to present the petition to council that would ask council to conduct the referendum. And then, I think it's 15% of the area. So some group, private group, council could not do it. Some private group would have to have a petition to submit to county council, that county council create a special tax district for fire protection in a defined area. And then council would have to certify the petition as containing 15%. And then if it did, then council would call for the referendum.
Mr. DeBose, so is it, based on what you said, is it true then that that 15% of that electorate would come, would have to come from the proposed fire district that's going to be in coverage? Is that correct?
Correct. With a fire district, we have to be defined.
Right.
The area.
And so that fire district, the new fire district, probably would not include individuals who are already covered in an existing fire district, is that true?
I don't know what it would cover, but more than likely it would not.
Okay. So that means folks that might, would live in Dusty Ben, who are not in the city but on City of Camden Water, folks in East Camden who are not in the city but are on City of Camden Water, San Diego, Charlotte Thompson area, they would not be able to participate or even to sign this petition to... So this had to be people that, this is folks outside of those areas that would have to be on this petition to sign, correct?
Mr. Snodgrass, you're correct. A group of people would have to present a petition, and petition has to have the parameters in the petition. The parameters as the area, but also parameters as the powers, the taxation, millage, fees. So they have to define what they're doing and how they intend to do it. I think the Lugoff Fire District, I'm not an expert on the Lugoff Fire District, but I think it might have been done by petition originally, but I'm not an expert on it.
And thank you. And again, I'm not speaking for or against referendum. Obviously, anytime we can get the citizens to the polls, I think that's a good thing. However, I did ask that line of questions just to help us unpack what all that entails. So thank you for your...
Council could not do it, Mr. Snodgrass, and you're correct. County council could not go out and get the petition done and formulate the question. You could hold a referendum, but you've got to have it presented to you by a private group.
Yeah. One other point that I want to add to that, I'll get to you, sir, is there's a flash-to-bang time in military terms, that once the referendum passes, it then has to come back here. And can you describe the time lag? In my understanding, it's another budget cycle that would take us well into '21, '22, would it not?
Well, it does go on budget cycles, that's correct, because they have to assess taxes and fees. So when it's passed, it has to go on the next budget cycle, because the fees and taxes have to be assessed. But again, the petition itself would define the powers and how it's done. But Chairman, you're correct, it would be the next budget cycle. If it did in November, it couldn't be effectuated until the next July 1.
Since Mr. Snodgrass entered the idea of 2020, if it passed in October of 2020, then it would come to us in the spring of '21, and then be entered on the tax rolls on 1 July '21, and be collected in the fall and winter of '21, '22, and we would be another three years or more before we began to hire our first firemen.
Based on the 2020 election, that would be the correct timeline.
So that would effectually be a three-year delay from now. All right, okay. Back, Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
I yield...
Mr. Conell, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I guess, generally on the referendum. And since we were on that fire subcommittee earlier on, that was one of our main considerations, was trying to run a referendum. I'm sure at some point, you know, it's kind of funny to say there's an app for that, there probably will be an app. I think the census they're doing electronically coming up, right? I'm not sure how that's going to work, but at some point, you'll probably be able to vote your mind or give advisory votes on these types of issues. But since we don't have that right now, what we're looking at is Act 388, and we are hamstrung or limited by Act 388 on the amount that the millage can be increased. If it's 9.7 right now, a maximum millage increase would result in $66,000 or so. I have to defer to Vic on the exact number. But based on full-time, hiring one full-time fireman, that wouldn't even cover that if you calculate in comp and benefits. So, you know, maximum mill raise doesn't do anything for you in moving towards full-time fire service that governs and protects that western portion of the county, where you saw on the heat map, and then also the eastern portion of the county that's having increasing calls. So what we were educated on at that time was, well, referendum's one way to not have to be governed by or limited by Act 388. But as you can see, the referendum itself has several issues. And I can tell you, for the folks I represent that live in the Blaney area and in the Elgin area, they're saying, we want full-time firefighters, and we want them as soon as you can get them, because they have an increasing trend line of calls and a static level of people that can respond to them, that are getting busier and busier, and haven't been entirely supported over the years. And like I said before, we need to do better with that. So as we've been educated more, the options have come up, that you can actually assess a fee. The referendum has its own problems, and I do hope technology catches up at some point, but we're not there yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, yes, sir.
I'm a firm believer that the referendum could be successful and could be done, it's been done times before. And that's what I was committed to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? That was a very useful discussion. I'll close by saying that we're not in a rush to do this, and not in a rush to get it wrong, but there's a matter of urgency here, and we have began this process three and a half years ago, as Mr. Carpenter said, with this document, our vision document. And for every council since 2016, it has been a priority to address this issue. I want to thank Mr. Jones and Mr. Conell and Mr. Gardner. I want to thank the fire services, volunteer and otherwise, and Gene and your team for coming in, because this is an essential life-saving function that's been made very hard by Act 388. I'm not in a position of blaming other people, but it is very challenging. And our volunteers and our firemen and our people need to have these life-saving capabilities. The task force did a magnificent job, the team of the staff did a great job, because this is a data-driven discussion. The emotion is there, the passion is there, but the data is absolutely unavoidable, and we must do something to help our volunteers and to improve our system of fire. So I'm committed to this. I now propose we move to a vote. All those in favor of this in its first reading, title only, so signify by raising your hand. We have Mr. Conell, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Snodgrass. Those opposed would be Mr. Jones, and it passes on the first reading. We now move to our next item on the agenda, which is like unto it, and that's item number six. If you can advance the page.
Seven, isn't it?
Shucks, I don't know, let's see. I'm losing track. It's item number six.
It's on the second page of the agenda.
It's item six. If you can't do that, it's all right. It's item six, which is a first reading entitled only of an ordinance by Kershaw County to establish a special tax district effective 1 July 2020, a year from now. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce this one, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is an ordinance that would begin the process that would allow us in 2020, 2021, to replace the fee with a millage. It takes approximately, it'll take the full year for us to work out the necessary details to affect it. So we are requesting that council approve an ordinance that would not take effect until July 1 of 2020. So this is first reading to effectuate that request.
Again, it's entitled only. Can we have a motion to approve on item number six?
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Tucker? Mr. Gardner, you want to lead off?
I just think that we need to make this our first step in moving forward on this. This is an important part of moving forward, and, you know, obviously, this can be changed at some point in time if so needed, but this is a, this is the needed first step for us to move forward.
Mr. Tucker, you had a second?
Yes, sir. Ditto. I'm just, you know, happy to give our administrator, Mr. Carpenter, the confidence and the authority to engage in a conversation with Bethune, Town of Elgin, and others, and how we're going to handle in more detail, if this is even possible.
Other comments? Mr. Jones, have your hand up.
I don't know that it was mentioned in the motion, but this is the unincorporated area of Kershaw County, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so therefore, Mr. Snodgrass?
I'm getting there.
You're getting there. This will affect your people, maybe?
It's coming up.
Okay. On the fact of being double-dipped? Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
This is why I didn't make a motion, nor did I second this. Chairman? So, Mr. Carpenter, question. So I think we all agree that, and Mr. Jones, thank you so much for bringing that up, because it is very important. We all agree that I think millage is more equitable than the fee, and I believe that's my interpretation. So explain to us, again, I ask questions that I already know the answer to, but just to, so they can go in the puppet record. Why did we not just move forward with just the millage plan? Why did we just vote for a fee for a year?
As Mr. Jones has pointed out, the key term here is unincorporated part of the county. As Mr. DeBose pointed out a little bit ago, under Act 388, we're limited in our ability to raise millage the necessary amount by pursuing. Therefore, that limits the existing fire district's ability to raise millage. We, in order to raise enough millage, we have to create a new fire district. By creating a new fire district, the way the law is written, the new fire district will apply to the unincorporated area of the county. It does not make distinction between the unincorporated that is served by a fire district. So the new district that is created in order to provide us the necessary funding, as a result of Act 388, creates a new set of issues that we will then have to overcome in this coming year. Those issues are working out with the City of Camden, Town of Bethune, and the Town of Elgin, to ensure that they have in place the necessary mechanisms to either provide the funding to cover the fire service that we are providing to them currently. That would be Bethune and Elgin, or with Camden, to ensure that a necessary workaround is in place, so that those residents of the county that receive service from the city do not have a negative impact on their tax notices. So that's why the year is necessary in order to get those workarounds in a place, or to get both those communities to where they need to be, and give them the support so they can effectuate the necessary changes in their ordinances or financing structures as well.
Because as it stands now, folks in the unincorporated areas that are serviced under the City of Camden, they don't pay the current, they don't currently pay the current fire mills, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because they're, and so the fee that we just passed is under the current construct of a fire plan that was adopted in 1998. And what is on this ordinance on the table now will deconstruct that 1998 plan and reconstruct a whole new plan, which kind of messes, kind of messes that up. So do you feel like, do you need this? Because I don't think it's anyone's intention on this desk to make these folks double-dip. I don't, it's not anyone's intention to make East Camden pay their City of Camden fire fee, as well as pay the millage. But do you feel like this ordinance to be read in is necessary for you to begin those negotiations and begin to work that out?
It's necessary, sir, because we need to effectuate the changes, so we can have something in place to be working towards. By putting this in place now, that starts the process going. As a worst-case scenario, let us say that for some reason, whatever the reason is, we can't work things out with all three municipalities. Then as a worst-case scenario, then we can just simply cancel that ordinance and stick with our current ordinance and a fee in place. It's not a best solution for financing for the reasons we've already talked. A fee is very regressive. It hits people at the lower end of the spectrum much harder than people at the upper end. It also hits people with a lot of parcels, you know, that may not have, even though they catch fire, it still may hit them harder if you have a lot of properties. So millage is not only not as regressive, millage also grows with the economy if he doesn't. Once a fee's in place, it doesn't change. It takes an active stance from council to change a fee, whereas the millage grows each year as the value of the county grows. So by putting it into effect now, that gives us the necessary year to work out the issues with those municipalities, so that they can be where they need to be come June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Tucker? Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass.
Just for a little bit more clarity, because I want to make sure that everyone is following you. Not only are we working with three municipalities, but we're working with two different situations where Camden's already providing a service, the Town of Elgin, Town of Bethune, we're doing it, but we don't have the authority to raise or levy any millage to increase their fees. So this is why you're needing this ordinance to get started, so you can enter into those negotiations. In other words, this is kind of like some good mud pie we're dealing with that we're trying to sort out and figure out. Well, it all goes back to, I hate to, as we say, we don't blame others, but it all goes back to our General Assembly, when they passed Act 388, and they destroyed every system, the school districts, the counties, the cities, and their ability to respond to issues such as this. We cannot set any kind of a millage or fee in an incorporated area legally, constitutionally. We don't have that right. So this, therefore, if we don't have, they can't impose a fee if there's no purpose for doing it. If they go and impose a millage within Elgin for a service that we have not made the decision to provide yet through this, and they just enacted a millage on their citizens that does not have a course-minding need on our side. That's why we have to have this in place as a starting point, so they then have a mechanism and a reason for imposing a millage themselves in order, or actually, how they fund it is up to them. It doesn't have to be millage. They will come to derive their own mechanism for funding it, but they must fund it themselves. We can't fund it for them. The reason why we can raise a fee on them currently is because they have already agreed to give us that authority within the construct of the current district. But once, but that's limited again, that's why we can put a fee on them right now. But to do a millage, we can only do what 388 lets us, as Mr. Conell pointed out, that's only six tenths of a mill. We need 14 mills. You can do the math and see you'll never get there if a millage is the desired way to fund it. Also, and correct me, Mr. DeBose, on this, there's nothing saying that this ordinance has to track with the budget?
Yes, when we're reading number six, about the new, no, it does not have to track with the budget.
So this can linger. Do we get good information, or as we get information back? And it's not going to be in...
And, um, it's not going to be enacted until July 1st of 2020. And this council has the power to repeal any ordinance that's ever been written in Kershaw County. So if this is headed down what I would call a rabbit hole, not a good place, I can tell you as one council member, I would never double tax folks, and that would never happen. Um, I will be the first to make the motion to repeal it.
Okay, other discussion?
But a vote for this tonight is, I'm, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A vote for this tonight is double dipping on the taxpayers.
Nothing's happened yet.
I just said, but, but in reality, that's what you're doing, uh, with the good faith that we're going to work on it down the road and not let it happen.
Putting the, putting the authorization into the administrator hand to do due diligence and getting us back good information so we can proceed forward. And if that doesn't happen, Mr. Jones, I can assure you, I'll be the first one to put the stop sign up.
Thank you.
Uh, question? Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
Uh, Mr. DeBose, is, are, would we be able to authorize the county administrator to enter into negotiations any other way besides an ordinance? Could we just by act of new business or something like that, say, this is what we're looking at? Please go and work these details out?
The administrator, this is just first reading.
I understand that. I understand this. Yeah.
And it's got a caveat in it. Number one is first reading, but number two, it's not affecting until July 1st, 2020. And number three, it doesn't track with the budget. Uh, so having given those three caveats, the administrator feels, and he effectuates policy, the administrator feels that he wants something concrete to begin the discussions, but he doesn't want anything finite to begin the discussions because he doesn't know the conclusion of the discussions. I believe I'm correct, Mr. Carpenter, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
So he wants something that he can go to, to talk to him about that is by definition on the table, but is not enacted and is not finite.
Yes, sir. And, and it is, uh, I'd like to also point out to, uh, to council, in approving, uh, this ordinance, uh, no millage at all is created. So right now, uh, if this ordinance were to pass on third reading, it would create a district that has, first of all, it has no entity because it would not exist until July 1st. And at that point, you would have had another budget cycle to actually impose a millage, should you choose to do so. Nothing would stop you from keeping a fee if, if that was the decision of the council at that time. Uh, but, uh, so I, I understand Mr. Jones's point about double dipping. Uh, it certainly raises the potential that double dipping could happen, but in reality, where you would leave it is there would be no millage discussed until the next budget cycle with that council.
That answer your question? Yep. Other comments?
Yes, I do. Uh, Mr. DeBose, I don't feel like Mr. Snodgrass's question was answered.
Well, does he?
No, I just said, excuse me, I got the floor, sir.
Okay, it's a statement.
Uh, no, um, excuse me, gentlemen, I can handle this. Okay. You know what I'm saying, Mr. DeBose? He asked you a direct question. You gave him a very good legal answer.
Well, I'm a, I'm a lawyer, so, uh.
I'm gonna say, that's Mr. DeBose's job.
What you know as well as I know, that negotiations can be had without this ordinance in place. You know that.
Yes, but I also know that Mr. Carpenter has requested this. He, he's requested this and thinks it will aid him.
Correct, no pun intended, but this is because this is what the administrator wants, and, and, and I don't fault him for that. Uh, that's why we pay him the big bucks to think outside the box. But bottom line is, you don't need this ordinance to enter into these negotiations. Correct? Yes or no?
I think he could go talk to him without this ordinance. He just feels the ordinance will aid him. But you're right, Mr. Jones, there's nothing preventing him from going discussing this with other entities.
Thank you.
Uh, any further comments? I think I'm ready to call the question. All those in favor of this, uh, ordinance, item number six, on first reading and title only, uh, signify by raising your hand. Uh, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Connel, and those in opposition signify. Mrs. Snodgrass and Mr. Jones, it passes. We move on to item number seven, first reading and title only of an ordinance setting the millage rate for Kershaw County for the fiscal year beginning one July 2019. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, can you help us introduce this before I take a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Uh, in tandem with the budget, uh, this would set the millage. Uh, as a reminder, the current draft budget presented requires no millage increase. Therefore, assuming that holds through to third reading, uh, this would keep the millage set at its current rate with no increase.
And to be clear, it must track along with the budget process.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Tucker's point earlier.
Right. We must have a millage set in order to collect it.
Okay. And you promised me this is the last budget item tonight. All right. With those, with that said, can we have a motion to approve this on first reading and title only?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion that we approve the, um.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Mr. Tucker, do you want to lead off?
No, sir, you.
Uh, and Mr. Gardner, any comments?
Just simply, this doesn't change the millage from last year, is what it is, so.
All right. Other comments? Uh, seeing there is no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of item number seven, first reading and title only of the millage rate for fiscal year 1920, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move now to item, and that's the last of our budget items. We move now to item number eight, which is a first reading and title only of an ordinance by Kershaw County, amending and restating, uh, utilities ordinance. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, can you help us?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you know, uh, Kershaw County has a sewer use ordinance that governs how we operate and the charge fees and, uh, what we expect from the entities who use our system. Uh, the county operates this system under a permit that's issued, uh, through the state, um, starting with the federal government through the state to us. Uh, it's called an NPDES permit, uh, which are National Permit for Discharge. Every time that permit is reissued, we must bring our existing code up to, uh, the expectations of DHEC and the EPA. Uh, therefore, what we are doing is we are updating our existing ordinance to make changes as required of us by the EPA and DHEC.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Snodgrass, discussion. Uh, pretty straightforward housekeeping here. Uh, we, we can move to, uh, vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and we move on to new business. Excuse me. The first item is item number one. It's at tab G, inmate health service proposal. Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, we, uh, are required to, uh, we went out for bid to renew our healthcare services contract. As you know, the jail, uh, operates a 24/7, uh, facility, and we must maintain levels of care, uh, for those inmates who are under our care. That includes, uh, medical care. And therefore, rather than employ, uh, physicians and nurses ourself, uh, we contract that service out. Uh, we put it for bid. Two bids were received. Uh, we are, uh, as you see the two bids in front of you, uh, the, uh, those bids were evaluated by a committee. Uh, the committee rated those bids, and they are recommending awarded to a Medico company, which is not the low bid, but it is, uh, a slightly higher bid. And, uh, the reason, uh, being, there's really several reasons why, uh, Medico, uh, it was suggested and is recommended by staff. Um, essentially, they are providing a number of, uh, services to the county, uh, that the existing, uh, the low bidder, uh, Southern Health Partners, is not providing to us. Among them, uh, Southern Health Care's bid includes a per diem for inmate counts over 120, uh, which is a nebulous number, hard for us to know what that could be, whereas Medico does not. Uh, they have a flat fee regardless of the number of inmates that we have. Uh, another is that, um, uh, the Southern Health Partners would require of us, uh, to, uh, pay for an electronic records program. Uh, Medico provides that program at no cost to us. Southern Health Partners would maintain ownership of that program. Medico, we would own the program. So should they leave our service, we would keep all the data that had been collected in the records, whereas Southern Health would carry it with them and they would own it as well. Um, there's some other, uh, aspects of it that are difference, um, that we felt were in our favor. One of which is that any necessary licenses and permits, uh, we can't put a dollar amount to that, but Medico would pick up all those costs, whereas Southern Health would require the county to pick those up. Um, stocking and restocking of emergency kits, uh, Medico would cover that themselves. Uh, Southern Health would not. Um, X-ray services, uh, Medico would cover all X-ray services. Southern Health Partners would not. And I can go on, but I think I've made my case why staff recommends them.
Yeah. Let me get it before the, the, the council, and then we'll hear further discussion. We have a motion to approve Medico, uh, correctional healthcare for our inmate health service.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. A second?
Second.
For Mrs. Snodgrass. Mr. Jones, I'd like to hear from you on this, sir.
Well, I think you guys have done a great job. Wouldn't want to be you.
You were her.
I were you. I were you, exactly.
You were them.
But, uh, Peggy, very thorough, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Other comments? Mr. Tucker?
Who's our current provider now?
Southern Health Partners.
Okay, thank you.
Others, other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I was talking to our gentleman before the meeting and, and just, there's a lot of value added here, uh, anything from, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, actual nurses that'll, you know, nurses are passing out the pills and, and things of that, of that nature, and, and even more time on, on, on property, is that correct? And, uh, so I, I, I'm really, I, it's a good thing.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Tucker?
And it's only $6,000 difference. I mean, you know, not a lot of money.
Uh, other comments? Uh, I just ask, uh, we have past performance on this Medico? Any, any citation on their past performance with others?
I don't have it in front of me, sir, but I, but we did check. They are, they're, um, active in other communities, some very large communities.
Thank you very much. And I would also say to Peggy, great job in recognizing the team last week. Thank you very much. Hot dogs were great. Uh, if you're ready to get, if you're ready.
What?
Yeah, I did. I, I ate one. I really did. There was no food desert at the jail last week. Can, uh, if I could call the question, you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We move to the next item, which is item number two, Governor's Hill Roadway and Entrance Improvements. It's at tab H, uh, it's Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you the bids, uh, for the Governor's Hill Roadway. Um, I have just closed my agenda packet, so let me pull it back up. Um, but you have, uh, uh, they've come in front of staff for consideration, and, uh, staff has proposed to council, uh, awarding to the low bid. Uh, the low bid is, hold on, you have in front of you, but I don't.
Armstrong Contract.
Yes, sir. Armstrong Contracting for 1.6. Thank you. Let me pull it up.
Very good. Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve?
Since that's my district, I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve Armstrong Construction LLC for 1.65.
Uh, can we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass. Uh, comments, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, just want to say, um, looking forward to we enhancing that entrance out there because there's a lot of traffic that goes to and from there as well on that exit. That's the last exit in Kershaw County. And hope that, uh, on our website as we complete this, that we get, um, some hits and hopefully be able to fill the parks.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass?
Yeah, just, um, the, my, my district is across the street. And, uh, and this is very, this, this piece is very vital to what I believe could be some revitalization, um, in East Camden and the areas around, so very excited about that. Mr. Carpenter, where, where's the fundage, funding, excuse me? My slang. Where's the funding coming from? Sorry, my youth kicked in.
Um, money.
Money.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. I should have pointed that out earlier. Uh, uh, funds for this will be derived from the, uh, 2015 bond that was issued for the support of economic development.
Other comments? Uh, this is a furtherance of the advice we received at the summit we did earlier in the year that said we had a right, a good plan that the governor endorsed, but it should be more aggressive. And so this is, uh, the next step in that, that trail of our four industrial sites. It will be very important that we get this done. Anybody who's ever bought a house or sold one knows what curb appeal means, and right now there is no curb appeal at Governor's Hill, but this will be helpful, very helpful indeed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, now, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, pretty much nothing's been done at Governor's Hill, correct?
Sorry?
Pretty much nothing has been done at Governor's Hill. I mean, this is going to be.
Of a construction, correct? It'll be the first construction we've done.
Got you. Thank you.
Exactly. Uh, just recite for everybody since the question was asked. This is signage and road primarily, correct?
Yes, sir. The property, about, uh, 200, 210 acres of property the county owns right at, uh, just off exit 101. Uh, Mount, um, Olivet Road and Doc Humphries Road, uh, is, uh, where it is located, the intersection of those two roads. Uh, this interior road would bisect it, leading from, um, Doc Humphries to Mount Olivet. Uh, it would cross wetlands that are in the middle of it that have required us and will require us to, uh, we, we found wetlands mitigation credits to purchase, so we have purchased those credit, uh, one credit's needed to, um, but we'll still have to build a, a bridge through the wetlands itself, uh, and it'll be a, a paved road, uh, for a small distance in, then gravel the rest of the way. It allows us to show prospects the entire property, uh, and it'll have a, an entrance sign. It's called a monumental sign. It sounds big. It'll be a nice sign at the entrance so people from the interstate can see it and as well as local citizens.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Quick follow-up on that. I did not support the bonds, still don't, and I did not support a spec building, but I'm going to support this. Hopefully this will be attractive and draw some folks in. We shall see.
Yeah. I'd just say, uh, to have an industrial site in the Antioch area and that part of the county will be transformational. I mean, it really will be. And it will be filled. That's what we're committed to do. And with that, I call the question, we're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move on to three other businesses, uh, items. Item number three, a reappearance of the planning commission. It's at tab I, in which, uh, Mr. George Harkins has asked to, uh, be reappointed now that he has filled the unexpired term of the person he, of Mr. Simmons, I believe it was. Uh, with that, now, Mr. Bozard?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Would you want to make the nomination?
Yes, I do make that motion, that nomination, that we put George Harkins back on the board, please, sir, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a second? Have a second?
Second.
For Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
Good man.
Yeah, he just finished the course, too, honor graduate, right, Mike? Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Let's move to a vote, all those in favor signify your hand, by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and Mr. Harkins is reappointed. Next item is item number four, and if you'll look in your package at tab J, it has been indicated to me, Mary, that Mr. Conder will not want reappointment, but Ben Strickland and Mike Jones have agreed. Mr. Jones is from the Camden area and Mr. Strickland is from the Elgin area. We can do a single appointment if you wish, or Mr. reappointment, or Mr. Conell, you could do Elgin, and Mr. Gardner, you can do Camden, or do both. I propose we just do both and we'll move ahead. Mr. Gardner, can you?
Yeah, I move to reappoint Ben Strickland, Mike Jones to the zoning board.
Very good. And Mr. Conell gives us a second. Any discussion?
Good man.
Yep. And we create a vacancy here, and during the summer, as we've all agreed, we're going to work on refreshing these vacancies as they occur. With that, no further discussion, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and that concludes our business. We move to council briefings, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you. And I'm very much surprised that you and I went to the detention center to have breakfast and then you went back for lunch. I can't believe it.
I think that's called double dipping.
But Peggy, I want to tell you, I want to thank you, that was on appreciation for all her people, and you got some fine people out there and you cooked up a fine breakfast that morning, and I appreciate that breakfast also. I got, I got a phone call the other day about a road, and normally, first thing I think of, well, I'm going to be calling Danny here in just a few minutes, get him and Nick to go out and fix this road, but I was wrong that time. It was somebody thanking Danny and Nick for the job they're doing, and I deeply appreciate that, Danny. And it was off of Hinson Bank Road, they call it Snow, Snow Bank, I believe it's called, and that's where it was. And they wanted me to tell you to thank you for everything y'all have done out there and they really appreciate it. I got one other comment, and I hate to bring it up, but I am going to do it. In our thing for public speakers, it says five minutes. And I know sometimes we let people go over, and we either need to stay with our five minutes or we need to get rid of it. And tonight, there were several of those speakers that went well over five minutes. And we, like I say, we need to stay with it or get rid of it. I know we got a timekeeper, but I ain't sure that clock's working too good tonight. But anyway, thank you.
Mr. Conell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say I was grateful for the teachers coming tonight to speak with us. Typically, Kershaw County, they talked about per capita funding, they receive in the bottom third in funding in the state, but they perform in the top third overall for scores and testing. So it's very impressive what they do. But we also, at the county level, in addition to the school district, feel some of the pinch that comes from not receiving the state funding that you thought you were going to get. At times, you, even now, we wait on final budget movements for the state to determine what we're going to do at the county level, and I could just cite the local government fund as one area where the county has had to figure out other things to do and make do. I want to also say, I hope staff will be cognizant as we think of Town of Elgin and Bethune, looking at a new potential fire district. I want to make sure anything that happens, you know, in the next few months anyway wouldn't impact their current budget negotiations and readings that they're doing right now, because it wouldn't include this issue necessarily. Then lastly, I wanted to congratulate Coach Mike Armstrong at Lugolf Elgin High School. I think this is like the 20th year in a row, no, it's probably like the fifth year in a row that he's gotten, he's received strength and conditioning coach of the year. It is amazing how he's able to motivate young men and women to work harder than, and push through what they think they can achieve. He really is a great motivator, he has a great knowledge base to share with them, and I hope he never retires and stays in Kershaw County, because he is, he is helping raise a great crop of athletes that are really starting to manifest themselves. You can see it with heightened college signings, every season, it's more and more kids are realizing their potential so that they can go play at the next level. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well done. Now, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Peggy, do the inmates get the same breakfast they ate? I didn't think so. I didn't do it either. And that was a smart move, probably. Again, thank you for what you do. I'd just like to say, welcome back, Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Well, you know, you and I may not agree on much, but I've been praying for you hard to argue with me for the next four years. Glad you're back.
Thank you.
And we're certainly going to be continuing with our prayers and following you as you go through this situation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate your family's support for our country, we appreciate your son-in-law, I know this has got to be tough, two terms I can only imagine, a family member of mine, but I tip my hat to your son-in-law. Now, one last thing. I want to just, I do not like being called a thief. I do not like someone saying that I steal. But folks, I may not like the tone that people use when they come here, but bottom line is, I think that people have a right to speak to us, and listen, I've had it happen many times up here, people stand up to me what they thought about me, and you take it. I just think the nature of the beast is, you just have to let it roll off your shoulder. But I think, I would like to see our council get a little bit more, I don't want to use the word liberal, because I am not a liberal, but just not be so sensitive, not be so sensitive when someone gets up here and says something we don't like. And believe me, I hear it all the time as well. But having said that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of council.
Thanks, sir. Snodgrass?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a few things I want to note. We had a rodeo in town last weekend down in the community of Antioch, the James A. Smith Memorial Rodeo, that it was a high school rodeo and was a fundraiser for scholarships, and it was organized by Leonard and Janice Caldwell, and had a, they did a fantastic job, raised over $6,000 for scholarships, and had participants from all over, from Spartanburg all the way to O'Ree County from the state. So, a lot of neat things that happened in our county, so thank you, thank you for putting that on. The Governor's Hill Run, just want to mention, in case the investor that we're looking for is listening via YouTube, that is in an opportunity zone, so give us a call. Teachers, gotta do what you gotta do. Teachers, thank you so much for coming and showing your support, being married to a teacher myself, I applaud you guys, and I see, I see firsthand, by being married to a teacher, being a parent, and also being a volunteer in our schools, I see firsthand, and I want to, I want to walk with you through that and help us any way with it we can as far as navigating the complexities that is local government. And we've heard, we've heard the term Act 388 a few times tonight, not only with schools but also with fire service. So, Act 388 is that leash that the General Assembly keeps on the counties and they pull on it every now and then just to make sure that we know that they are, we are listening to them, I guess. Want to congratulate Camden High School Track Team, four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, state champions, so congrats to those ladies.
Second year in a row.
Second year in a row, absolutely, and so congrats to them. And then lastly, I want to express my struggle with the fire discussion. I don't, we spent, this council, you need to know, this council spent a ton of time listening and unpacking the ton of time that our staff has put into that, and I'm a big supporter of seeing our county move from a volunteer, mostly a volunteer base to a professional fire service, and, but I do want you to know that I struggled tonight with the question that I did to vote no one, just because, just by principle, and I realize how government works, I understand it's first reading, I understand it's not binding, I understand that there is no millage attached to it, and I understand that we could go back and change it, but the way it stood, it was going, it would have a negative, such a big negative impact on a lot of the folks in District Five, and I just want the council to know that, I was not trying to be contentious, but I truly, truly have struggled with that vote and something I've spent a lot of time and prayer over. I want to let the citizens know that as we unpack this fire, this fire plan, as we unpack the budget, please, please, please reach out to me. My email and my phone number is on the county website. I will gladly, and would love to, we'll meet at Hell Street Grill, we'll meet at CC's, we'll over lunch, we will unpack anything, any questions that you may have, because it is complex, it is, there is a lot of spider webs that go into this. And so, as we move through these second and third readings of these things, please do not hesitate to contact me, and I would love to, love to walk you through that. Thank you again, council, and that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you. Very briefly, welcome back, big guy.
Thank you.
Godspeed, continue to heal and. I want to also say a special thank you to Ms. Brown back there, I know it was said earlier, and Mr. Carpenter does recognize all of you who work so hard, but this has been a trying budget cycle already for us, and I thank you and your staff for your late nights and your dedication to this county, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Also want to say thank you to Ms. Amy, who's director over the Kershaw County Chamber. I want to thank you for that surprise Friday night, that I had no idea was coming, I was truly surprised and very honored and appreciative of receiving that award. And I want to thank Dr. Mary Jones and her family. Martin, thank you for the article, it got on the front page, it's not bad publicity, so I guess I'm doing all right. So I say thank you to all of you who have called and who have text and communicated with me, congratulations, and I'm really humbled and honored and thankful for what y'all have done. That concludes my report.
Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, let me address the teacher situation. As a former teacher, of course, I taught back before Act 388, so we didn't have all the issues that we have now. But one thing was mentioned tonight that, you know, that we control their budget, we don't necessarily control their budget, we approve it, or approve millage rates or whatever, but they also said that we had not given them an increase in the last three years. Well, they haven't asked for one. They don't ask, they don't get, so let's clear that up. It's not that we didn't give them one, they didn't ask for one. But I'd like to thank my colleagues and staff for all the prayers and calls and everything, keeping me in the loop for the last few weeks, and I appreciate that, and I covet it in the future. Thank you.
I'll close it out. First of all, much discussion about my role as chairman, and then part of that is decorum. I just want to say, Mr. Jones, that's a nice hat.
You're welcome. I wear it well.
The superlatives keep running in, we're coming to the end of the school year, our kids make us proud, and our teachers even prouder. I mean, what can you say? You've heard it here today, many of these councilmen have mentioned it, they just keep coming in, graduation's coming up, let's pray and act to keep them safe. You all know what happens around this time of year, let's keep our kids safe and let's thank our teachers. I would like to point out that you heard tonight about mental health. You see it acted out in the police reports, you see it acted out in schools, it doesn't help us in our role as an all-American county, that mental health is where it is, and we're, we just got to do more, the volunteer organizations, the teachers, everybody's trying, but we adding 14 new patients a month, and that's not without any relief, and somebody walking out the door, that's 14 more. In Vision 2030, we talk about an entire look at the health of our county, and part of that is the opioid from the Alpha Center, part of that is mental health and how we treat our children, and how they're treated, and so on, I just ask you to look at that. One thing that's going on is Livewell Kershaw is doing what's called a Community Health Improvement Plan. Catherine Johnson and that crowd, they've got volunteers from all over the county, from every institution, and they're doing great work. Mike Conley's on it, many of you in this room are, and those of you listening, but I think it would be a shame if we didn't address this issue upfront. Lastly, I've asked Mr. Tucker and Mr. Carpenter to help us understand this census coming up, and I want to tell you, I've talked to the head office in Atlanta for this region, and the county staff has done a great, great, great job, but now it needs to move out into the community so that every person is counted, it has tangible effect on how much money we get, it has tangible effect on our voting districts, and on and on and on, and so I'd ask a briefing on that during the public hearing part on the 28th of May. With that, Mr. Carpenter, take the lead.
Mr. Chairman, members, a few items for you. First, this coming Saturday will be the Third Annual Yak in the River, starting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, putting in up at the dam, floating down the river, getting out at the New River Parcel. We'll have people there to receive you. The corporate sponsor is, again, the Mulligan Law Firm, many thanks to them, ensuring there's no cost to citizens to participate. They do need to bring their own kayaks, however, and there is paperwork they will have to fill out, they can either get online and do it, or when they show up. But again, there'll be shuttles running to take people back to their vehicles up at the dam, so they'll drive to the dam, float down the river, we'll drive them back up to get their vehicles so they can head home. So that's one of the exciting things. In reference to the lunch that Mr. Bozard did not participate in, but the chairman did, we have some pictures, as you can see, the gentlemen, ladies, the fine men and women who serve us at the detention center, some pictures of them, we appreciate the sheriff as well, he and his captain Coleman was there, and appreciate all that they have done with that. Also, on Friday, we had the annual VACCO rodeo. Now, the VACCO rodeo is an annual competition, good natured, between the city and the county. Our public works employees participate against their public works employee to see who is the best at running this heavy, big yellow equipment. And for the first time in five years, Kershaw County won the head-to-head competition against the city, something that our men and women work hard at and try to accomplish. I have suggested that next year we have an elected officials competition as well, to put the chairman against the mayor, council members against council members. We have a ringer already.
How about Al? I'll put Al.
We have several ringers as well, so I think the city may be scared, and they may not want to participate.
Did you say wrestling match?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Mr. Smoke against Mr. Conell. It was a, it's been a good week for the county, as we enter into the EMS Officers Recognition Week. It's just important to remember that public safety is a very broad-based arm of what we do as a community and how we serve them. We started with our telecommunications 911, then we have done our detention center, we're doing our EMS law enforcement as well, will be coming up. They all do an amazing job, it's a terrible job in many cases, if not many times, and the kind of job that most of us wouldn't do, wouldn't want to do, but these men and women do it, they do it with pride, and they do it well. So I appreciate councils, respect of them and recognizing of them as well. We'll keep you updated on the status, I know that Gerald has got, again, a week of recognition for his employees, and just encourage you, when you have an opportunity, to thank them for what they do. And, Mr. Chairman, though it's not the same level of service as your son-in-law, my daughter has come home from five months abroad, and so I'm quite excited as well. And that's my report.
Mr. DeBoz? Mr. Chairman, council, I have nothing.
Sure.
At eight o'clock.
Actually, Mr. Chairman. I've got one thing.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Coming up on the 30th this month, Kershaw County Economic Development and the Chamber of Commerce are sponsoring a seminar on opportunity zones. It'll be held out at the campus, and it'll be speakers educating people on what an opportunity zone is and how they operate, and how they'll benefit a county such as Kershaw. As you recall, or may recall, they're a part of the budget that was passed, the president's budget, they were proposed by our own Senator Scott as the lead proponent of it, so they're South Carolina homegrown, and we'd love to get some participants from our county, so October, I'm sorry, May 30th, out at the offices at 90 Campus Boulevard.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Conell, any discussion? Let's be safe out there. All those in favor, raise your hands, and we are dismissed. Thank you.